Go into presentation agenda, mayor's report. That'd be you.
Oh, no mayor's report.
Counsel report. Mr. Guines.
None.
Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett. Okay. Moving on to the public agenda where we have citizen comments. We have a total of forty-five minutes allotted. Each citizen gets three minutes each to speak. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? Now's your time. Anyone on my right, your left? Anyone in the back? If not, we'll move on. Citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy. Not even here.
I'm ready to go.
Okay.
May I?
Go ahead.
Okay. The purpose of this workshop was to discuss the ordinance which was a... We did a first reading for it on January the seventh, 2020. It was tabled on January twenty-first when it was scheduled for a second reading. This is an ordinance that covers some changes in the Code of Ordinances, Section fifteen, which is personnel. I have the Code of Ordinances here before me. It is a large book with a lot of material in it. And a lot of it's very badly out of date. For example, "All garbage, rubbish, trash, and other waste substances to be disposed of by the owner or private collector shall be disposed of at the city dumping grounds." Can anybody remember when we last had a city dumping grounds? I think it's gotta be at least thirty years.
I was in the third grade.
I picked that... I picked that one just to say, one of the things the administration is trying to do is to work through this very important book, which is our set of rules that we work on, and try and update these passages to bring them up to date. So, we'll see you through the year and ask your cooperation and help in trying to update that book. In this case, we're talking about the personnel ordinances. And there were six specific items in the ordinance. One was performance increase eligibility. One was merit council. One was the accrual of sick leave by part-time employees. One was unused leave crediting. And one was medical leave without pay. The final one was tuition assistance. So, six specific items. I've given you two handouts at your place. One is a copy of the ordinance, the same ordinance that is on the table today. And the other is a workshop on proposed ordinance changes. And I'll use that to walk through these six items. The first one in the ordinance that we're asking to be changed shows... You'll see the number one on the first page, fifteen dash one dash ten, "Performance Increases to Be Conducted on Employee Anniversary Dates." In parentheses, you'll see, subject... The actual language that is in our ordinance book today reads, "Subject to appropriation of municipal funds, performance increases and the compensation of regular employees in each class shall be based on an annual anniversary date determination of acceptable performance." My comment, you see written there, is that we're just trying to delete the words "anniversary date" and leave the determination of acceptable performance to be done annually, but not on the anniversary date. This is the way we do this today. We do it once a year. All the employees in Fire Police, Public Works, and so forth, they all get an annual evaluation. That goes in their file. So, what we're saying is that we just want to change the word "anniversary date" to remove the word "anniversary date" and leave the rest of the passage as it stood. Do you have any questions about why we would do that? I mean, if... Otherwise, we'd be doing one a day, or two a day, or three a day, or depending on when somebody had a... Everybody has a different anniversary date.
So, you want to basically do it like a calendar year?
We would just want to do an annual evaluation for everybody once a year. And that evaluation then goes into their file. And it becomes... It becomes an element in doing performance increases. So, all we're asking you to do is to ask us to... Is to recommend removing the words "anniversary date" and leaving everything else the same.
I don't have a problem with anniversary date, but I do have some questions about this particular ordinance and the revisions. I don't... If it's a good time.
Are you done with your presentation?
I'm done with my presentation on item number one.
So, item number one only pertains to subsection A. Then, the next one, subsection B... So, we're gonna be going through this ordinance. I don't know if your questions pertain to any specific sections, Councilman Tisdale.
Yeah. These questions would be just for the section that you just reviewed.
Section A?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
It mentions that Department Director... Determined by the Department Director to have performed satisfactorily or better. Do we... And these are all common questions, evaluation-type questions. Do we define what satisfactory is? Or do we want to say superior instead of satisfactory there? That's... Just hear me out on all of these, because some of them kind of hang together. So, how do we define satisfactory? Or how do department heads define satisfactory since they're making that determination? And it refers to the... All the major duties and responsibilities of the position. Do we have those responsibilities for each position? Or maybe a job description or something like that? The next question I have is somewhat different. It's a budget question. Do we set aside a particular amount of money in the budget each year for performance increases? And if so, where would we find those in the budget?
We don't... The answer to your question is no.
Okay. So, it's in a department budget? And I would assume that goes back to whether or not the funds are available.
The most important words in that section that we did not change is "subject to appropriation of municipal funds."
Right. Is there... Again, is there... And what is the criteria for a performance increase? Is it superior? Apparently, it's just satisfactory performance or above.
Satisfactory performance, availability of funds, recommendation by the Department Director, and approval of the mayor.
Right. So, I'm the Department Director, and I've got forty-three employees in my department. And I'm recommending this guy right here just because he's a good satisfactory employee. And I've got this guy over here who's a good satisfactory employee. Everybody will tell you that. But how come this guy gets a performance increase and this guy doesn't? I mean, how can we do this as objective as possible? If I know what the criteria... If I know what the criteria is and it's spelled out, another way to put it would be, what would I see this guy doing that I never see this guy doing related to their task? So that I can say, this guy deserves something for his hard work and initiative.
That's what we pay the directors for.
Okay, so...
To make those determinations.
Okay.
I don't know how we would define satisfactory, fair. These are all subjective terms.
Well, they are. And the issue when it comes to performance evaluations or increases is always, who's gonna make that decision? And what's the criteria? So, I think if we can spell out the criteria as best we can, even if they're guidelines to give the department heads guidance, it's better than just saying, "Well, you know, my friend, Mr. Glavinech here, he's a good guy." And he was a good guy last year, and he got that raise. And that's always a concern of anybody who didn't get a performance increase, is all I'm trying to say. I think if we had something that would give department heads a little more guidance, some ground rules, some basic tenants or whatever. And I'm thinking, before we had the merit council, maybe the merit council had some input, perhaps into the criteria. But, I mean, that's coming next. You're gonna speak about merit council, I think. So, anyway, I just want to offer that. These are all common issues associated with performance pay or performance increase. And I know people get very touchy about that. I'm sure they're already touchy about it.
I have perhaps four dozen requests for performance increases on my desk that were not... Have not been done because of availability of funds.
Right. So, are they... Not to put you on the spot, but I will. So, are all four dozen doing satisfactory or, I would think, superior work?
They're all satisfactory and recommended by their department heads. But their department heads didn't have the budget to pay for it. You know, sometimes you have employee A, employee B, and they're equally satisfactorily qualified. But employee B is leaving because he's about to get another job.
Right.
And maybe he's the guy that gets the extra bump to keep him. You can't... You've got to leave... The department directors have got to have the... I mean, you can't write satisfactory for a police officer that matches a ditch digger. You can't... And I'll... Billy Ray, I didn't mean to... The mean ditch diggers, because we need them too. But what I'm saying is, we can't write a specific... What... This is satisfactory that would apply to firemen and police and tractor drivers and engineers. I mean, you... I don't... I think you're asking for something that we can't get to that kind of detail.
Well, if nothing else, could we not ask the department heads just to put it down in writing what their criteria is and publish that criteria? So, everybody that works in that department knows. And it may be particular to a job description, but I'd like to know what the ground rules are. I might shoot to be a superior person if I knew how much effort I had to put out.
That's what job descriptions are. There's a specific job description for every grade in the ordinance. It says, "This is what... These are the functions I'm supposed to perform." I mean...
How it has occurred over the past several years is the evaluation is one part of being recommended for...
An increase.
An increase. Usually, I mean, as y'all are well aware of, that, you know, you have to be here one year permanent status for still service, you know? Usually, here in the budget, when y'all grant raises for employees, y'all write criterias up, whether you're paying... If you've only been here one to four years, you get a three percent. If you've been here, you know, five, yeah, three, four, five percent, no less than a thousand dollars. Lots of times, y'all write those criterias. So, based on an annual increase, availability of funds, it's usually, I mean, performance evaluations is one factor.
Of four.
Why?
We just keep repeating them. Availability of funds, satisfactory performance, recommendation of the director, approval of the mayor.
So, I'm just asking, can the criteria that's... That each department head uses, can't they commit it to writing and then...
Well, on our performance review, we've discussed putting A in the four.
Yeah. We have... We use a standardized performance review that they fill out when they grade.
Is that tied to their job description?
Yes.
Okay. So, if you stacked all of these up when they're done, I've rated... I've rated everybody. And of all the Kennys, this particular Kenny scored better than everybody else.
One of the blocks on the performance appraisal says, "Exceeds expectations, meets expectations, or needs improvement," for example. That's on the evaluation form.
The next thing is, what if my forty-three-man department, they're all satisfactory or better, and I'll play the game. I'm gonna recommend them all for a performance increase. I guess those are the ones that sit on your desk.
In some cases, those are the ones that just... There's no availability of funds. But you asked, how do you know who's doing better? As I pointed out, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, the vast majority in the bell curve are meets expectations. A very few exceed expectations and some need improvement.
Sure. Well, on the high end of the bell curve, that two-and-a-half percent, I would think, maybe we look at the top two-and-a-half percent in every department, which wouldn't be many. Might be one or two police officers a year for a performance increase or not. Really, what I'm looking for is just something committed in writing that everybody's familiar with in that department. What's the criteria? I mean, I understand that we have department heads.
And in some cases, councilman, they have to make a decision. Do I want a new truck? Or do I want to spend some money on performance increases? Or what that balance is? That's what they get paid for, to decide those things.
Right. But that's also why sometimes we can't hang on. And I agree with that. It's why sometimes we can't hang on to good employees. So, I'll just kind of summarize this really and say, I really wish we could have a... That this would be the first step in a comprehensive overhaul of our compensation schedule to go along with these benefits that we're addressing today. I hope the council would spend some time on this in a workshop this summer, six weeks before we deal with the budget item or the budget deadline, so that we could get all that straightened out and plug in the numbers up front, is all. I'm trying to help you here. I'm not being a pain in the neck. I just know that everybody thinks they're doing a great job until somebody says, you know, it's like America... What is it? American... Not America's Got Talent. What's the one with Simon Cowell? American Idol. Everybody thinks they're a terrific singer until somebody says, "Actually, you can't sing or squat," you know? So, that's all. I'm done. Thanks.
Okay. But again, just to sum up on item number one, we recommended to remove the words "anniversary date," which allows us to do performance appraisals once a year.
Go ahead, Demi.
The only suggestion I would make with item one, removing the anniversary date, I think the intent of the statute was to give a hard and fast time in which to do these. So, if we remove the anniversary date, instead of just using the word "annual," could we put some hard and fast deadline, whether it be the passage of the budget? Or pick a fiscal date, you know, throughout the year? Right. I'm saying, one day, August first, being the end of the fiscal year for this purpose. Or what is the fiscal year? September first, right?
October first.
October first, excuse me. So, we could use that date. We could use whatever arbitrary date, but as long as it's actually an annual date instead of just a word that could be interpreted as anything for any employee.
Say, annually during January, for example.
If that was the date, right, that would give you a hard and fast deadline of January thirty-first.
Would it be better, since you start a fiscal year in October and for budgeting purposes, just have those recommendations in and determine who receives those performance increases no later than August first or September first? And they would be effective with the new fiscal year?
Yeah. It'll work just like your insurance date that's on the insurance on your car... In your car. It says, "Here's an effective date, and it's good for a year." So, whichever date we do it on, it's good for a year.
Right.
We could do it, you know, in the beginning of the fiscal year. Clearly, you want to have it in place before the budget starts in July. So, you want to have it in sometime in the first six months of the year. So...
Yeah. Well, I'm thinking if we did it on or about August first, for that matter, then you know... You have some idea. If you really want to get to... Get away from, do I want to pay the employees who do an outstanding job a little more? Or do I want to buy a truck? I would think if you made those recommendations and they were approved and we knew what that amount was in August, we could budget that effective that October. That's just a thought.
So, availability of funds, which is one of the other factors, is usually not known till the audit is published. And that... We usually shoot for March, April, May timeframe. So, pick a date. We have no problem with adding a specific month.
Comptroller is a crackerjack. He ought to be able to keep up with that and let you know what those projections are.
Hey, Mike, we buy the insurance in March, don't we? Normally, we buy insurance in March. We changed it from the summer, so it'd be cheaper rates before you got into the bad weather. So, we started paying for the insurance sometime early part of the year. We gotta wait, pay it late. You don't want to do it in October. You buy the insurance early, you can set those dates early if you want. That's how you buy the insurance. You don't buy it after or in the middle of the season. You buy it before the season.
So...
Yeah. I wanted to touch on that leave, too.
Well, in order for it to be after the audit comes out, which tells us availability of funds, which tells us... We... I mean, in January, we know availability of funds, but it's nailed down tight once the auditors agree with us. So, I would say, pick a date. I would use a date that was somewhere about halfway through the year, like by the first of July, which is... Well, let's see. October and January for remarks.
Well, what worries me about that?
First of April. April is halfway through the fiscal year. So, during April.
April.
During April would work. That gives us... We'd have a budget by then, and we're at mid-year review, so we know how we're doing halfway through the new year.
Yeah. The date doesn't make any difference to me. It's just the assurity of having a date. I think April first is a good date. I think it puts us in a position to be able to project what our expenses are gonna be.
April it is.
Okay. We'll say during April. We'll be okay with that. And now that you won't be able to... This ordinance will... We'll have to take it off the table after we've made the changes, then. Well, I don't know how much more we're gonna change today. Shall we move on to the merit council, then, number two?
No, because I have a question. I have a... I've been trying to get in, and I don't talk over people. I do have a problem with it because, like I said, my biggest problem with doing it, jamming it all up at one time is, what if we start pencil whipping? You know? I've seen where we're gonna do them all at one time, and we're gonna jam them all up and pencil whip, and we don't get an accurate account or an accurate account for this individual's work. So, I... You know, in some sense, I do have somewhat of an issue with it because when you do it, when you start grouping them, then you don't get an accurate count of that individual's work. That's what, you know, I wanted to come and chime in, but I didn't get a chance to get in. So, I see a somewhat of an issue with it by us grouping them all together and just doing one big blanket thing for everyone else. Blanket thing, everybody, you know, one size fits all.
Well, we've given ourselves thirty days, a thirty-day window to get it done. If we can't... I mean, the directors had no problem at all getting these in last time we did this. I mean, we print the forms out, they fill them out, they hand them to their superintendents or their other supervisors. Those guys go talk to the employees. Supervisors sign them, and the director signs them. It just... It gets done. You want to... If we spread it over the whole year, then we're doing this every couple of months. Again, we're back to anniversary date. That's just stupid.
Well, they call it count.
It's too hard to keep track of who's had one, who had one. You do it all at once, get it done. I mean, I've been doing this in the service for years. You did, too. You always got your performance review, you know, at a certain time of the year. And the boss had thirty days to get it done and submitted it.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen it done both ways in the service. And they call that accountability, when you do it on the person's birthday. I mean, I remember doing it on the birthdays of each person or each individual. So, I see it both ways. But that one size fits all, it concerns me a little bit.
Well, here's where we are. We're trying to take out anniversary dates, which makes it different from all six hundred and forty-seven employees. I've got a different date they have to get their appraisal on. We're taking that out and making it annual. And we're saying, "Annual during a thirty-day window that we get to do it." I feel sure that we can get it done in thirty days. We did the last time we did it. In fact, we did it like in two weeks. So, I mean, the guys, the fire and police have the challenge of having people on shifts, so they got to get people on all three shifts, but...
Have we tried it before?
We just did one last year. In 2019, we had a performance review. We handed them all out, gave everybody a couple of weeks to get them in. Everybody got them done. I would say, let's try it. I mean, we've proved we could do it once before, all at once. It's a whole lot easier for us to do it all at once, and everybody knows they're getting reviewed. Everybody's getting like a certain magic moment in time that they're getting a review. And it's fair for everybody that way. I mean...
Yeah. And I know it's easier for us, but of course, you know, like I said, at some point, we still have to look at the employees and what's fair to them. Because far too many times, we, you know, as many of the councilmen and myself hear about being not treated fairly. And so, when we start looking at making changes, you know, I'm looking at the fairness of it, making sure all the employees get treated fairly in some fashion. And of course, you know, there's always gonna be one or two that's gonna be left out and not treated above board, which, you know, in every organization, they have it, which includes Biloxi, too. So, that's what I'm concerned about, jamming it in there all at one time and missing people. And we come back and, you know, hearing the... And we get to hear all the complaints from it. So, yeah. I mean, I'm for trying it for a little while, but just to see how it works.
Yeah. I've just... I can't imagine trying to spread it over the year. It just doesn't make any sense, because then you get... You got to get a snapshot at one point in time of how everybody's doing against each other. If you do it, spread it over the... You know, maybe Jimmy... Maybe Jimmy's, you know, good in April, but maybe he screws up in May. And then, Jimmy John is in February, and, you know, he had a good month that month, so he gets a good review. But maybe he screws up then. I mean, you're looking at a snapshot of how they did over the last twelve months, and you're evaluating them all at the same time.
Right.
And some of them exceed expectations, and some of them just get by, and some of them need some improvement.
Right.
They fall in one of those three buckets.
And what I'm concerned about is if this guy's having a bad month, and you're evaluating them then. And you're looking at the whole spectrum of a year. And one or two days could reflect his whole year. And, you know, we're still human when it comes down to it.
Yep.
Very human.
Yep.
And those things do happen.
Yep.
So, I just wanted to bring caution to those areas. That concludes that for me.
The second item is the use of merit council. That we're trying to eliminate the word "merit council" and any discussion of merit councils. We have not had a merit council now for several decades. In fact, I can't find any employee who can remember when we had a merit council. So, obviously, we haven't needed a merit council and don't think we need one. So, I'd just... I'd like to remove that whole section about merit council.
If you remove it, you replace it with anything, you're just removing it?
I'm saying that the department director and the supervisors are the merit council.
So...
I mean, so Johnny, Johnny, the utility crewman, he gets an evaluation. And that evaluation is signed by his supervisor. Then, it goes to his department head. So, he's getting two looks at it, the department heads, to make sure that the supervisor's not playing games, and he's evaluating his people well. And I don't think we need a separate outside counsel to decide to help us on evaluating. I would find it annoying if I was a department head to have some counsel telling me who my good guys are and who my good guys weren't. That's what we're paying the department head to do. So, I mean, if we haven't had a merit council for decades, why do we need one?
And you take a look at those recommendations from the department heads before you, I assume, and bless them, before you send them to the mayor for a blessing, correct?
The mayor doesn't... Yes. I look at all the evaluations when they come in, but they're signed off by the department head, and ultimately, the mayor initials them. He's not gonna know that kind of detail.
So, Mike, if I disagree with my evaluation, what's my recourse?
There's a block on the... The employee signs the evaluation, saying he's received an evaluation. And we have a grievance procedure.
So, can I issue a grievance through HR and say, "I don't agree with this"? And then, what happens?
Well, then, it's gonna go to the mayor.
All right. So, it goes to HR. HR looks at it and makes a recommendation to the mayor? If the mayor needs to get involved? Is that how it would work?
If there is a grievance on somebody's evaluation.
Okay.
Most guys that need improvement don't need to be reminded why.
So, if there is that process, I think that needs to be included in the agreement so the team members know that if they don't agree with their evaluation, there is a recourse.
I wish we...
It's on the form? It's on, it's on the form?
The employee gets, make a, a comment on the performance evaluation also. And then if there's a middle person, a midline supervisor, and I'm giving you the evaluation and you don't agree with me giving you that evaluation, you have a recourse to your director. And then at that point, you know, if the director agrees with it, says, no, you performed bad this year, then the employee can file a grievance. They'll be with me and I'm usually the employee, the director, and we try to work it out. And then if it isn't solved at that point, it can go to the administration. It will be like the mayor. And at that point, it's civil service, jurisdiction, everything, civil service all.
Okay.
But there's instructions on the form that, that allows him to, A, sign, saying he agrees or doesn't agree, and B, make a comment.
I, I understand. I've seen those forms where if I, we, we got them in, you know, out in the regular force out there, the, the business world, and it simply says a comment section, but it doesn't necessarily say, I disagree with this and I want, I, I want somebody to take another look at it because I, I don't think I performed badly or I want to make my case that I, I performed exceptionally. And that's what I may, want to make sure is that our employees have that opportunity.
So the grievance procedure then is consistent regardless of the department. It always comes through, okay?
I think in some cases, some of this language predates when we had civil service. And, and you, that's always under, you know, plays as a safety net. If all else fails, you've got a civil service commission to be able to send a grievance to.
Can we, can we add language to these reviews that make sure that they're patently aware of the appeal or the grievance process?
When this ordinance comes back up for a final vote, I'll, I'll make sure before that you get a copy of the form so you can see what the form says. I'm sorry I didn't bring one tonight. I should have brought one. The third item on the list is accrual of sick leave by part-time employees. We're changing one-fourth day to two hours and one-half day to four hours, for clarity. I don't think there's any problem with that one. Pretty straightforward. The next item, number four, is crediting unused leave in the PERS system and you'll find two very long charts. I'll have to defer to Jill to explain why, but basically this is, puts us in compliance with PERS on how we do, how we do conversion of, of, of leave and how we, how we credit unused leave. So all we're doing is going, we're, we're complying with PERS. The fifth item on this ordinance is medical leave without pay. This is probably the easiest one. This, the, the sections, sections that we're eliminating is the old language and instead we're adding in the city recognizes the Family Leave Medical Act of 1993 under the, under, to the state statute. Basically, we're saying we're going to bring our language in compliance with the federal statute on FMLA. So we don't need two paragraphs to say we're complying with the federal statute. We just say we comply with the federal statute. That, that's the change. And the last item is number six. That's tuition assistance. And in the tuition assistance area, let me give you a little background on how much, on tuition assistance. In order for somebody to get tuition assistance, which is one of our benefits, the employee engages in us with an agreement. I have a copy of the form and I think I put one in your package that, 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 that you'll see it said, the city agrees, the employee agrees and so forth and so on. These are all the things we jointly agree to in order for them to get tuition assistance.
Is this new, Mike, or the existing?
We're, this is in existence. The only thing that we're asking to change is today, one of the things in your package, you'll see a long list of employees. I want you to see all the employees in this last year that drew tuition assistance. It totaled $95,000 we spent on tuition assistance. One of the problems with tuition assistance is that there's a law, big, big variety of schools that people may choose to go to and this plays right into the, sort of a national debate about, about paid-for colleges and so forth. You could, you can go to community college for $150 an hour or you could go to Tulane University online for $600 an hour. So we just feel like in the city that we should cap the amount of money that a person can, can collect from us in a given year. And if, if the, if the person chooses to go to the more expensive diploma factory, online, take online courses from a very expensive school, that they should shoulder that cost. I had one, we had one, one employee this year that, that billed over $22,000 to us in tuition assistance because he chose to go to William Carey. I just don't see why we should, why the city can't somehow cap the amount of money that we're paying in tuition assistance. It's a benefit, I realize, we're not asking to take the benefit away. The vast majority of the employees are not exceeding the cap that we're, that we're proposing. And the number that we chose as a cap, $5,250 per year, is annually the cap on also tuition assistance being taxable income. Anything over that would be taxable income.
I think so.
So basi- so basically, every employee in the city, if they decide to go to college, are eligible for a $5,000 scholarship from the city as long as they keep their grades, what, C or B or better or whatever. Is there a graduated reimbursement rate based on the grade they earn? No, it's just, you go, we reimburse you as long as you...
You have to make a C or higher for undergraduates, B or higher for graduates.
Okay.
And you have to pay us back if, if you leave the city before two years after your graduation. You have to pay us back.
Do we have any uncollected reimbursements for any idea what that total might be?
We don't, that I'm aware of. Do we have who?
It looks like not just a yes, but a yes, look.
Do you have one?
We have more than one.
More than one that we haven't, that hasn't paid us back?
Yes.
See, we really need to be able to take that out of their last paycheck.
Well, they, they don't make enough to take five grand out of a paycheck, but certainly not their last paycheck. I mean, the intent, the intent is good.
I would agree with you, the enforcement is an issue.
Yeah.
Well, you know, on the front end though, their department head has to agree that the, that the, the subject that they're pursuing or the degree that they're pursuing is related to their job.
Not necessarily.
Something that they're, they're going to do.
Not entirely. It's, or it leads to a degree.
They're saying no.
It, it leads, it leads, it either leads to a degree or...
It's, yeah, but it says that in the ordinance.
But it, it leads to a degree.
It states that it has to lead to a degree. It has to be from a accredited university. To be, to get reimbursement for a certification, the department director can approve it as long as it's job-related. So let's say you have someone in public works that's maintenance of the buildings and they want to get a certification in AC. That's not a degree, it's a certification. So as long as that's job-related and it's approved through the department and up through the mayor...
Okay.
Then yes, we will pay for certain certifications.
Would you, would you pay for that same employee in public works, working on a degree in social work?
Yes.
The college or graduate courses must lead to a degree or be certified by the employee's department director or the mayor as relating to the employee's job with the city.
Right, so certification, say by the tech department, if you're getting, what is it, Microsoft's certifications or endorsements, it obviously extends your skills and there's value in that. So, and that's what, kind of what you're talking about.
So, so right now, is there a cap? Right now, there's a cap?
It's 21 hours a year.
It's hours, not, not...
Not money.
Not money.
So therein lies the problem is if 21 hours of Tulane is not...
If I want to be a doctor and pursue my doctor's degree in something and it's very expensive, right now, we, they, they're eligible to be reimbursed if they're successfully completing the course.
We're picking, we're picking up the load for 21 hours per year.
Yes.
But again, it has to be, the college or graduate course must lead to a degree or be certified by the employee's department director or the mayor as relating to their employee's job with the city.
I have a couple of questions. Who does, who all does this apply to? Anyone that's a employee in the city?
Full-time employees.
Do they have to work a certain amount of time? What I'm seeing, they don't have to work, they could come to work and the next day apply for college.
They have to be here one year.
Does it say that in this ordinance or in this agreement? I don't see it.
It says, with at least one year of employment, it's the first line. In addition to any other competition.
With at least one year of full-time employment, yeah, it's right here.
Yeah, I just didn't see it in the agreement I was looking over, but that's...
So be here one year.
One year, okay.
And the degree must be certified by the department director and the mayor as relating to the job, employee's job within the city. Relating, relating can stretch. There's, I mean, there's a little bit of wiggle room there on relating to...
So what's the average?
The vast majority of, of our employees that are in, in school are firemen and police.
What's the average reimbursement? Do we have that number? What's the average we spend a year in tuition reimbursement?
The average at, per year?
Yeah, what, what did we spend last year, I guess? And how many employees? And that would give you an average.
We had 20, 20 employees and we spent $95,000.
On 20 employees, so...
Four, four and a half.
Yeah, four and a half, four and a half.
Would that number have changed with the amendments?
So 5, so 5,000 would be fault.
Did we, did we spend, did we pay more than $5,200 on any one of those employees?
Well, one employee received $22,000.
Wow.
So...
With 100 employees and, I mean, 20 employees into basically $100,000, it's $5,000 the average. If you, a mathematical average would say that they, they would all fall under the 5,000. Only it's a minority that falls above the 5,000.
And council members would be eligible for this?
Non-elected.
What? What?
You have enough degrees.
I did. Should have used my time more wisely.
I think whenever you get in situations where it's expensive like that, it should be a supplement versus paying for the full amount. I don't know what the magic number is, but, you know, I could go apply for Harvard and you'd be responsible for my classes if I stayed here and worked for a certain amount of time, the way it's written now. You know, I could work here 10 years and get a degree from Harvard and, you know, that could be very, very expensive.
Well, with the amendment, that would, even if you chose to go to Harvard, it would still only expose us to $5,200 as opposed to the original. So the amendment, I think the amendment's appropriate.
Does it, does it say that, that you're capped at 5,000?
It does.
That's what we want to change it to.
Oh, okay.
The amendment says for up to 5,000.
That's per year or...
Pardon me?
Is that per year?
Per calendar year.
Per employee, year per year.
When this was originally written, you have to realize there weren't online courses like they are now. So...
Most people went to junior colleges.
Exactly, and they went to nights.
Or Gulf Coast.
Or, you know, things like that. Well, now you can do online, so you can take them at any time. You can go full-time and still work full-time.
But the, the hourly rates that, I had them written here a minute ago, somewhere, you know, you can go as high as $600 an hour now for some, some of these, some of these courses.
I think it's, I think it's a, a very reasonable revision. I, I think it's, we understand where the, the odd number came from, 5250, then it becomes taxable. And like I said, it's basically, there's a, there's a promise to each employee who's been here a year that you're eligible for a $5,000 scholarship if you want to take advantage of it.
Correct.
I'm good with that, thank you.
I can see why you're trying to clean up, Mike, but I don't understand why any director would allow somebody to get $22,000 worth of education. Who approved all that? Talking about director head and all this stuff like that? Who approved somebody $22,000? I mean, that's unbelievable. My god, I don't even make it $22,000. And that went through like it was nothing? Nobody paid attention to that? Come on.
The ordinance states...
I don't care what the ordinance said, I'm saying...
Well, I mean, we have to go by what this ordinance states.
Why would you approve something like that?
Because it was leading towards a degree. So how can I discriminate against you?
He didn't have to go to Tulane. The director didn't do the job.
Okay, he's not going to Tulane, but let's say you go to Tulane and your classes aren't costing, you're not taking as many classes. You're only taking one class a semester where he's taking three.
You can't justify $22,000.
Well, I agree, but...
It's, it's been spent, so we can't fix it now, but we can fix it to where it doesn't happen again.
All right, so I'm going to make one more comment about the $22,000. So we, I don't know who the individual is or if they've completed the degree or they're still pursuing it, but what if they're in the process, they're pursuing this degree, they've detrimentally relied on our promise that we would do this and then all of a sudden we're changing it up and it blocks their ability to get their degree now? Is that fair? And they're, they're successfully working toward finishing up that degree. Should we put a grandfather clause in this thing or not? Just asking the question.
Perhaps this might answer the question. You've got to have the approval of your supervisor, right?
No.
Once it's approved, once they're in the program, they're in the program.
It doesn't go to the supervisors, only for certifications. It goes directly to...
That's not what, that's not what our ordinance says. That's what our ordinance says. Read, read the frickin' ordinance, lady.
I mean, the average even with, the average of these 20 individuals, even with the $22,000 was $5,000. The average that we pay per employee was coming up to $5,000.
Uh-huh, read the rest.
Or be certified.
I know, but if I'm, if I'm...
Yeah, I think our human resources supervisor is correct. I think she's, you're right. The way it reads, you're right.
College or graduate courses must, must lead to...
A degree.
A degree. Or, or, or be certified.
If it doesn't lead towards a degree, then it has to be certified.
Or, or be certified.
If it leads to a degree.
Mm-hmm. Or be certified. You know, that probably should have said, and be certified.
So we only have one person that is in the program that's spending excessively at this point? Is that correct?
This year.
Okay, so...
It has, we've had other people previous years. I'm not saying this much.
So at this point, so at this point, that's the only person that is doing that?
Correct.
Okay. Could we put something in to allow that person to...
That's what student loans are for.
Regardless of that debate, could we say, okay, if you're in an existing program and you're going to finish out your degree, we could grandfather somebody in to finish and then as the new people apply for applications, they fall under the new provisions.
I think you're muddy in the water.
We have a director that's wanting to say something.
Chief, do you have a question?
Please.
If you're going to go down, here's the issue you have. You're talking about not doing online courses.
Hold on, are we giving the mic?
No.
Okay, you're talking about not doing online courses because they're too expensive, but you've got to consider that firemen work and policemen work shift work and they can't go to class when classes are being held. So they have to use these online courses. So what I'm telling you is if you go down this road and help this one person, you better consider helping everybody else.
Chief, out of curiosity, the, the CEO said that the majority of these people are police and firemen. So forgive my ignorance, but what courses are police and firemen taking to further their career as a police or fireman?
Most of them, police would be criminal justice and fire is fire science.
Medical?
Yeah, medical, that's correct.
MT certified to be on the department. So above one paratican.
I think, I think most organizations now are going to the cap, putting a cap on it because of the different types of schools that are out there. And, and I, I think Mike Leonard mentioned, you know, you mentioned about how the military does it and their cap is 2,500 a semester. That's with the National Guard program that they have, tuition reimbursement. So 2,500, 2,500, that's $5,000 a year and that's what most of them are going with. So 2,500, 2,500, that's $5,000 a year, and that's what most of them are going with. So this almost sets close to the line of what they're doing with, of course, with that additional $250. And I think that's fair to give them, set a cap, 5,000, maybe 6,000, and leave it that way. And everybody follow the same rule.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with Felix on that. We need to set it for the year, not a semester, because you have some schools that have trimesters and things like that. So if we set it for the year and someone decides they want to go to a school that charges more, it becomes a supplement instead of paying for their education.
Yeah.
Well, and they maybe don't take 21 hours.
You're saying six?
Whether we do 2,500, what we're doing, 5250, yeah, 5250 or $6,000 cap at the whole year, if they use it the first semester, and we still have some schools that go quarterly, and I think I was on the trimester, as long as I got to that cap. Once I got to the cap, everything else after that was, was my responsibility.
I have a thought, I have a thought on that 5250 or 6,000. Once you're over 5250, that impacts your tax, taxes, right? And does the city have to notify those individuals?
We do. We have to place it on their pay as income and they're taxed on it.
So, and you've got to go in and touch those individuals literally individually. So if, if we, if we stay with 5250, then there's nothing that the business department has to do.
Correct.
That would simplify life a little bit over there for them.
Are they W-2ed or 1099ed on that?
No, it's, it's put through wages through their checks, so they pay taxes on it. It's not a wage, but it is taxed.
So it, it goes on their W-2, not a 1099?
Correct.
So we in turn pay taxes on it too?
Correct.
So it costs us more than the 5250? Okay.
So 5250 is the cap.
Just out of curiosity, do you guys have any proposals to recapture the leakage when someone does utilize this program and then leave the city? Is there any proposals on the table to, to attempt to recapture that?
No, I mean, I mean, oftentimes, we don't find out somebody's leaving until they're ready to go out the door. And, and they, they're not gonna be able to come up with this kind of cash. That's a problem, enforcement's a problem.
Usually, it will cost the city more in legal fees than it is for us to reimburse it, to get the reimbursement back. And we do it as a rolling year. Once you've satisfied, let's say I go to school and I get reimbursement in May of this year. Well, May, then I also get reimbursement in December, and I quit in August. Well, I have satisfied the May two years later. I would only owe for the December. So I mean, it does, you know, you just have to work two years once you receive the tuition reimbursement. So it rolls. Does that make sense?
It does.
So it's not like, you know, if I got...
So Mr. 22,000, if he left now, he wouldn't be responsible for the money that was reimbursed for the semesters previous to two years?
Well, if he left now, yes, he would be responsible because that's what he collected this year. And he'd have to satisfy two years of that. But, right, if he collected money two years ago, that's been satisfied.
Did he get an A?
Yes.
Okay, good.
I have another...
No, actually, I believe he's gotten some Bs, but we still reimburse for Bs.
Does this, this will run from January to December, not our fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Those are the six items. We've been through the six items. To recap, we agreed to change the item number one to eliminate anniversary date, but, but make the performance review annually by April 30th.
22,000.
Or during April, or by April 30th. There were no changes to three, no changes to four, no changes to five, and on six... I think we're okay on six. I think we're, I think we're leaving the cap.
It's a good number.
Mike, just to bring it back to number three, this really wasn't part of your amendment, but I still have a difficulty grasping the fact that we're giving either sick pay or vacation time to part-time employees. I just, I've never seen this, that you work 10 hours a week and you're accruing vacation. How many, what is, what, what exposure do we have?
These are part-time employees. So these are part-time employees. We have some part-time employees. Yeah, a lot of, some harbor masters are part-time.
Lifeguards.
Lifeguards, yeah. So we have a number of part-time employees.
I mean, I get who they are, but part-time employees are still part-time employees. You know, if they're lifeguards and they're seasonal, they've got a vacation already. I just don't understand why we're paying vacation pay to a 10-hour-a-week employee, why we're, why we are obligating ourselves to more financial ownness for something that is, I don't know, it may be a standard practice for municipalities, because I've never done a budget for any other municipality other than Biloxi, but in the private sector, this is unheard of.
I would agree with you.
I'll agree with you also, but we've had this since before I started here.
You know, we changed a lot of things as time goes by. I think, I think this is something we should look at. What, so what I really want to know is our, our accounting. What does this cost us every year?
For part-time?
For the part-time, yeah.
Usually...
Well, they can't sell the sick leave, but they can use it.
Well, so if we looked at it, if they use it, obviously that exposes us to the cost to replace those hours. So every hour that they use as sick leave does cost the city that hourly wage. And then, of course, the vacation or anything else like that. I'm just curious to know how much money we're actually spending on these benefits for, for part-time employees? Is there any way to get, to get a calculation of that?
I would have to run a report to see, you know, used.
How much sick leave was used by part-time?
I also think there's a big difference in somebody that's working 30 hours a week that's been here for 10 years versus somebody like Robert says that's working 10 hours a week, that's a seasonal employee.
Seasonal employees don't receive.
Okay. Or someone even that...
These are permanent part-time. These are employees that work for us.
And how many hours do they normally work, though?
Less than 29.
Less than 29? So could we put some kind of deal?
The resolution says 10 to 20 hours work per week.
Or 21 to 39.
Yeah, they get a different rate, excuse me.
Yes.
Correct.
How many people do we have that work 10 to 20 hours a week?
Most of our employees are 24 or more. We don't have...
Okay.
Well, I think, isn't the, I mean, the industry, industry standard is 32.
Well, it's below 30. Any employee who works 30 or more on an average has to receive benefits, insurance and stuff. So any part-time employee, we keep below 30, which is usually three days a week, 24 hours, 29 at the max. So they don't receive health insurance and dental and all that.
Would you, would you put it in front of a report so I could see exactly what we are spending on part-time employees for these benefits?
Sure.
Thank you.
I agree with a man over there. I don't see where part-time employees should get anything. They're part-time people. You got enough people in the city you need to take care of. They work full-time. Let's work with them, take care of them. Part-time people, part-time people. Probably have another job anyway. Let's have another job, take care of them.
They don't get medical insurance, they just get their straight pay and they earn a little bit of sick pay, which, you know, which they can, sick hours, not pay.
They go full-time. If they want to do that, they want to get the benefits, go full-time. Part-time people, no.
If the council wants us to do away with sick leave for part-time employees, we got no problem doing that.
How much does it cost us? We're always trying to save money.
Annual leave.
I just don't see the purpose of it, anyway.
They, they, they do earn annual leave, some days, some days of annual leave. I mean, some of these guys stay part-time for us for a long period. They don't, they're not just part, part-time for a couple of months. Some, a harbor master might be a part-time harbor master for two or three years.
Well, how come they're not hired as full-time employees? I mean, you're talking about a few hours.
Because we, because we don't need them as a full-time employee.
Four, five hours? Makes that big of a difference?
We, we use the part-time employees just to fill gaps when, you know, this, we can't, we don't have everybody to make a shift because the full-time guys are taking vacation.
But those, I mean, that's, that's the nature of the beast. Those, those part-time employees have other jobs or other things that, that provide for their livelihood. This is supplemental. To, to earn benefits like that, look, I don't want to get into anecdotal or emotional arguments right now, I just want to see the numbers that we're spending on from part-time.
I agree with that.
That's, that's one that, that I would kind of support, because, you know, I look at, when we're in season, we, we have areas like the visitor center, and when they have a lot of functions there, and some of them may exceed the 40 hours of working throughout the week. And I've seen them work there from sunup to sundown, making sure the people are taken care of. And if you have dedicated people there that's still listed as part-time, you want to hold on to them and give them some type of compensation. So in my view, from some of the people that I know, watching the programs and watching how they come out and, and do their jobs, I would definitely support this because of what I've seen. Thank you.
But that would be seasonal workers, right?
No. Seasonal employees don't receive, they're seasonal. These are what we call permanent part-time. They're here all year long, like Mr. Leonard said, for several years. Lots of times, because they are part-time, like you said, you know, they can schedule their appointments on their days off, but sometimes they needed, a family member may be ill and they need to take the whole week off. Well, then they could use their annual leave and get, so they don't miss that. A lot of these are retirees, or, you know, they don't have supplemental. Some of them are, you know, or they're, they're, they're college students working at the naterium, you know, being lifeguards and things like that, so they are only working part-time. And, you know, if they go on a family vacation or, or they get sick, you know, that's what the leave's for, for the hours they would have been scheduled for that week.
Memic, alas.
So, so you basically, and, and what Jill just said, basically, you're rewarding people who are dedicated to the city.
So...
And filling those gaps that, that other people are not, are unwilling to fill.
Again, so I, I don't disagree with that. So the, the difference in this isn't creating a system where everybody gets a benefit because we're trying to take care of those few people. So what we do is we use compensation, we use other ways to incentivize that type of behavior. But if you're rewarding someone based off how many hours they work, it doesn't protect that person. It exacerbates the exposure of the city's finances. And so what we have to do is find ways to help the people that have been dedicated to the city, and we look at our compensation, our payer, or other types of benefits that they, that we can voluntarily give to them on, on a different basis. But when we, when we just set out a parameter that everybody falls into, regardless of whether they're dedicated or filling gaps or, or whatnot, then again, that's why I want to see the calculation. I want to see what our exposure actually is, what we're really paying. And we need to find the people that you're talking about, and we need to compensate them because we need to keep those people.
I thought compensating them was giving them that day off or giving them that leave to take care of their business.
There is different types of compensation. Giving them, but the thing is, what I'm saying is, Felix, we give them that day off based off of a resolution, we're also accruing the day off for the other person that's not doing that. That's what I'm saying. So we're double paying for that guy being a great employee, when we can actually focus just on that guy and give him a compensation instead of creating a blanket compensation for everyone. That's all.
Anything else?
I have nothing more. What I would suggest is that we make the few changes and that we put the rest, the ordinance back on the, on the, on the agenda at the next meeting, and that will give you an opportunity to either to agree with it, have a second vote, or, or tell us it still needs some work and keep it on the table.
Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? So I need a motion to table this?
No, he's gonna, he's gonna make the changes and put it, bring it back to on the agenda.
She has to have a motion to table it to the next...
I'll move it.